Call this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning. This is Porter County Board of Commissioners meeting, November 1st, 2022. It's a little past 10 o'clock. We're going to move right into consent agenda. Melanie?
App谕of Payroll, October 5th, October 28th, 2022. App谕of Claims, October 6th, 13th, 20th, 27th of 2022. App谕of Minutes, October 4th of 2022. Treasurers Monthly Reports, September 30th of 2022 filed. Waits and Measures Monthly Reports, September 16th to October 15th, 2022 filed.
All right. And then we have Memorial Opera House, a couple venue rental agreements. We have MTI, if it's for the entire 2023 season, four shows, and then two Concord Theatrical, two shows. And then we all, and then that would be the consent agenda. I'll throw it to the floor for action.
Motion to approve consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next up, we have some announcements here. We're going to be under, why don't we have the 911 department heads come up here? We have a recognition for a couple 911 employees, and I'd like to have Debbie Gunn take the, take the lead on this. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity, Board of Commissioners, to honor a couple of our dedicated staff over at the 911 Center. I'd like to start with. First of all, we'd like to honor Sandra Gallegos, who has started her career with Porter County October 15th, 2002. During her tenure, she served the citizens and responders of this county in many different roles, such as certified training operator, assistant supervisor, supervisor, training coordinator, and IDEX coordinator. She's actively been involved in or coordinated multiple community outreach programs, such as the Christmas Family Angel Treat, Hilltop House Pumpkin Palooza, Porter County Fair Wristbands for Kids, and Valparaiso's Downtown Trick or Treat. She was also chosen as a representative for Porter County Central Communications during Ivy Tech's Active Assailant Tabletop Exercise. Sandra's instinct and work ethic continue to be a fundamentally positive force for the center through those she has mentored and worked alongside. In her free time, Sandra enjoys running and has been a participant in the Chicago Marathon numerous times. On behalf of Porter County Central Communications, thank you, Sandra, for your 20 years of dedication and service to the citizens and responders of Porter County.
Thank you.
And next, we'd like to honor Scott Valpetic. He's been with Porter County Central Communications since October 21st, 2002, as the mapping 911 database administrator and application developer. Using ESRI's ARC GIS products and a series of additional applications he developed, Scott was able to immediately impact the map update process and improve accuracy in the Porter County 911 dispatch mapping system. Scott has developed several applications which support dispatch operations by providing additional tools to improve dispatcher efficiency. Additionally, Scott developed a map and addressing training program specific to Porter County for new dispatchers. Scott's public safety insight and perspective not only enhances the effectiveness of the frontline dispatchers, but also contributes greatly to the collaborative effort of the 911 administrative team. During his free time, Scott has enjoyed coaching the Valparaiso High School dive team. On behalf of Porter County Central Communications, thank you, Scott, for your 20 years of dedication and service to the citizens and responders of Porter County. Thank you again, Board of Commissioners, for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie.
And congratulations again to Sandra and Scott. Thank you for your service. We're going to move into the Commissioners' Agenda here. First up, we have Eric Gibson from GIS Insurance. Good morning, Eric.
Good morning. How's everybody?
Good. How are you?
Good. Good. Thanks for the time this morning. All right. So, we finally have everything consolidated into a January 1 renewal date, which is exciting. Because of that, we have several items to cover this morning, so I'll try to be efficient. First and foremost, just wanted to start with the GIS consulting agreement. So, full transparency, everything is fundamentally the same. We are proposing a three-year term, just for some budgeting certainty, for the county. I've outlined the previous three years, as well as the next three years, on this spreadsheet that you guys have. We are proposing a bit of an increase, but that's literally just to get us closer to that industry benchmark, which I've included there from United Healthcare and Anthem as well. We've made a lot of really good progress from a plan management perspective, so we're excited to continue serving you guys. Any questions?
I think just having all the renewals on one date makes our life a lot easier compared to what it was six years ago, right? I mean, it was, ooh, all over the place.
Any questions?
Looks in order to me, from what I've seen.
All right. So, next up, we've got the Business Associate Agreement between Porter County and GIS. Just discusses privacy, HIPAA, our responsibilities for having access to all of that. Nothing new here, just a renewal. All right. So, moving right into planned performance. So, overall, you guys, right now, well, actually, as of 91, you guys were about $500,000 below the expected cost for your guys' claims, so they're overall as a plan, which is fantastic. One of those, one of the reasons for that is because of the strategy of trying to migrate some of those folks from the copay to the HSA plan. Naturally, the copay plan is a more expensive plan, so kudos to you guys for approving that. The goal, you guys might recall, was migrating 20% of those copay folks to the HSA. So, 2021, we had 27% of employees on the HSA plan, 73% of the copay. As it stands today, we are at 55% on the HSA and 45 on the copay.
A jump.
Yeah. Big jump. That is certainly a contributing factor, so.
Good news.
Great work. All right. Moving right into the executive summary here, which is this document. Current plan there, annualized on the left. We've got the initial renewal offer right there in the middle, and the revised renewal, which you'll see there on the far right. So, if you're looking at the initial renewal, you'll notice those double blue bars at the bottom. It's about a 13.5% increase on expected costs. So, this is claims-driven, and frankly, I mean, we expect to have some large claimants in a group of your guys' size. We were able to go back to the negotiating table with Berkeley and the other stop-loss markets, and we're able to get about $600,000 off of that renewal offer, which brings it down to just over 7% on an expected claims basis. So, as I mentioned, a group.
So, if you could give us last year's expected, and then our current expected, and then our next year expected, have you just went over?
Yep, absolutely. So, on an expected basis, let's see, total plan costs, this is annualized, of course, because this was a short year.
Yep.
So, looking at $9,373,000, going to just over 10, 10 million.
And that's total plan costs?
Total plan costs, correct.
That's everything from your expenses to the short-term disability and everything in between.
Does that have clinic in there, too?
That has the clinic in there as well.
Okay. Yep. Yep. So, like I mentioned, you guys do have some high-cost claimants. That's to be expected. The silver lining with all of this is that those folks are potentially going to get some life-saving treatment because of this plan. So, within this document here, we've got the UMR admin renewal. They are proposing a small increase. It's about a buck per employee per month, which equates to like $9,000 on an annual basis, so nothing crazy. Everything else is the exact same. The Berkeley stop-loss renewal, so that is the, the red A that you'll see on that spreadsheet. That was the big part of the negotiation, as I expect, as I mentioned, getting that $600,000 knocked off, mostly in the ag factors, but the stop-loss premium as well. So, again, claims-driven, so not a whole lot we can do about it. Questions?
Question quick for Attorney McClure. Can we vote on all these at once, or can we, do we have to vote on these separately?
No, we can do them all at once.
We can?
Okay. It's all part of the.
It's what I thought, but I just.
Under one umbrella with GIS for the total package for the, all of the benefits.
Okay. Perfect. So, next up, we have the MetLife renewal. Basic life in AD&amp;D is flat. Dental is a 6% increase. Vision is flat as well. So, no major changes on that front.
Was any reason why the dental popped up?
It didn't seem to be claims-driven. It was just markets.
Okay.
So, the good news is, we actually decreased some of those dental costs moving to this fully insured plan, so that's, yeah, that's a benefit there. All right. And next up, I've got Tim from Healthy Access for the clinic. The program is performing really, really well. No changes for this coming year. I do have Tim here, if you guys have any direct questions.
Morning, Tim.
Morning.
Any questions on the clinic? Got the guy here in front. We can ask him. I think, from what I'm hearing from the employees, it's going over very well.
Thank you.
And I think it's also helping drive our claims down, too, right? That's what we're trying to get to, so.
We're seeing the utilization tick up for 22 versus 21, so the actual unique, which means the actual number of employees using the clinic is up about 10, 15%.
Oh, that's good, that's good news, too, so. I think anything we can do is, is the departments and things, anything we can do to get people to, to go to the clinic first before they go see their doctor, that's the whole goal here, and that's why we have the safety net. So, we're going to continue to give a plug here till the end to, to help dry and drive those claims down, because that is what will help drive our claims down.
And it really is beneficial. I mean, you can get in quicker, you can get free medication that's right there that they can just hand you, so.
It's a great benefit.
It's a huge benefit.
Yep. Yep.
Yeah, we're happy to, I know that my team is working with, you know, the team here all the time on promotion and going out, so we're happy to be partners with you in trying to make your employees healthier. So, we're always looking at ways to try to get engagement up.
Well, as we learned through moving our people over on HSSAs and other things, that there's a certain amount of internal marketing that you have to do to your 600 and some employees.
Right.
You have to inform them of what's going on, and I think Rhonda and the team has done a very good job of that, especially from this, from the county, starting from zero. I, I think that that's really helped, and obviously, in the conversion of the plans, that's obviously a big number, too, so that, that there's a little bit of proof in the pudding, I guess, is what you'd say, so. So, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Tim. All right. I do have to correct myself. I misspoke when Scott asked the question about the dental and MetLife and all of that stuff was included on that executive summary spreadsheet. That is not, but I do have the numbers here for you. So, from a total cost perspective, if we annualize 2022 on a total spend basis, again, max cost, so absolute worst claims year possible, you're looking at $10,853, and going to, again, maxed, max case, 12,500.
What was expected in max the year before, if you know?
Let's see, expected, so again, this is just for the medical, so the expected was 93. The, the squishy thing about some of this is that it includes a lot of the, so, life insurance, dental, vision, HSA contributions, clinic, which is a little bit variable, so.
Right.
Those are some, some ballpark numbers for you. All right. Next up, American Fidelity. We have Aram from American Fidelity with us here today. Program is going very well. No plan changes, no increase or anything for this year. They do a fantastic job of helping us during open enrollment, so.
Good morning, Aram.
Hi. He's here for any questions.
Any questions of American Fidelity? Why we got him here? Guys are doing a good job.
Thank you. Nice job, Aram. All right. And last, but certainly not least, we are amending the SPD, which you guys know is the governing document for basically your entire plan. Just adding some clarifying language for the spousal carve-out, just so there's, again, it's more clear of what we're trying to accomplish. We've got a copy of that here, if you guys don't.
Yep, it clears it up.
Perfect.
So, as, as far as seeing over our whole plan, then, I mean, what, what are, what are some of the takeaways from this year that you think the county needs to do to improve on next year?
Absolutely.
Because that's what we're always looking for, the takeaways, right?
Absolutely. So, there's a lot of, a lot of things that we can do. One of the things is going to be that coordination of care that we discussed about over the past couple of years. A big step in that direction was, of course, the move to the captive, so again, kudos to you guys for, you know, seeing that and jumping on that opportunity. That, frankly, that was one of the big reasons why we were able to negotiate so much off of that initial renewal, was the, the leverage from the captive, so.
Yep. Okay, thank you. Any other questions of Eric?
Thanks, Eric. Thank you.
So, to be clear, they presented one and two, so I think we can do all number one in one motion and amend number two on a second motion.
So, all number one in one motion, and two is separate. It's a single motion.
Correct.
Okay. So, motion number one.
I will, should I list all these?
Yeah, just one time, yeah.
Motion to approve the GIS consulting agreement, the GIS Business Associate Agreement, the UMR TPA renewal, the Berkeley Stop Loss and Captive Renewal, the MetLife Renewal, the Franciscan Healthy Access Clinic Renewal, and Employee Benefits Fee Disclosure Schedule, January 2023.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the county's GIS insurance renewals. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next up is for the renewal for American Fidelity.
So, move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for American Fidelity renewal. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
I think we should, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Thank our employees as well for buying in and giving some of this stuff a try that we're trying to get them to do.
Absolutely. They've been fantastic in this transition.
And, and I would like to also just thank GIS. I mean, we've been down the road now for, what, four years? Is it three, four years?
Four years now.
And we've come a long way, and I think you guys are the ones that keep the pressure on us to keep, keep meeting, keep talking, keep refining, keep refining, and I know this, this gets you to be our ambassador for those few years coming up, and I know you guys have earned that right, and let's, let's keep this thing trending the right way.
Absolutely.
But thank you for everything at GIS. You've been a great partner for us, and it's really helped the county a lot, especially from a, a local insurance company, too, so thank you.
Well, we appreciate the partnership and just looking forward to continue serving everybody.
Yep. Thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
Next up, we have an amendment to ordinance 19-04, creating a non-reverting fund, number 4923, for receipt of reimbursement for school resource officers. This is second reading.
Motion to approve on second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next up, we have an ordinance ratifying the Porter County's fourth proposed investment of America Rescue Plan Act funds, plan for the American Rescue Act Plan of 2022. This is first reading. So, what we'll have to do here is we'll have to, we'll go right into it. Is there anything we need to talk about before that? I think everybody knows what's in front of us here.
I'm not entirely sure what's in front of me. Somebody could explain that to me. I, I thought we had sent a, a, an ordinance dealing with this issue to the county council for their consideration. My understanding now is, is that they have arbitrarily decided to change it, which I'm kind of, I'm kind of, that's, as a county commissioner, an understanding, I'm sure my, my, my associates here understand as, understand as well as that it's this body that creates ordinances, it's not the county council. And I, I thought we were, I thought we were past this point. We were, it wasn't that long ago that we were all raving what a great job these committees did in vetting who was going to receive ARPA funds, and then out of the blue, it's changed. So, I, no, I don't understand at all what's, what's happening here.
Well, I don't think it's out of the blue, and I don't think that the council's role in this process is supposed to be a rubber stamp, and so they've sent back to us some changes. They didn't completely redo this thing. They, they tweaked it and made it something that they want to approve, and now we get to look at it again and decide if this is something we want to do or not.
Well, what's, what's, what's difficult to understand, Laura, is that at least three members of the county council were participants of those committee hearings. And as you know, we've met, I mean, there were literally dozens of hours that we met vetting this process. There was no objection at that time. Again, after it was over, everybody was patting each other on the back. I'm, I'm sure that even a few people left the room with a sore arm, they were doing it so much. And it was, you know, it was, you know, and I, you and I spoke about it, this board spoke about it. Again, I don't, I don't understand. We got a $5 million expenditure on here that was never part of the ARPA hearings. Five million. Of, of all, of all the projects that are, that are going to be funded with ARPA funds, that project alone, which was never vetted by the committee, by the committee or committees, is going to be the single largest expenditure coming out of $33 million. That's stunning to me. Again, we, we, you and I gave our words that the Opera House was not going to be funded with, with pandemic funds. My word, my word means something to me, and I'm going to keep it.
I am always open to compromising with our council.
Well, I'm, I'm open to compromising as well, but the time to compromise, the time for the discussion was during those, those, all those meetings that we had, all the effort that we asked the public to attend, we asked the public to participate. That was the time to have the discussion, was in a political, was in a public forum. It's, it's, the process is not two or three individuals who make a decision and they come into a public meeting and break that, that news on their fellow board members, and then it's, then it's voted on.
I don't think it was two or three. I mean, my understanding is that this passed the council 6 to 1.
Yes, but how many of the council members were, it was discussed with them? They had no idea it was coming to them. I talked to, I talked to two of them, and they had no idea it was coming, that would, what was going to happen. That isn't right.
I can't speak to what happens at the council.
Well, it, it makes us all look foolish up here when we spend so much time, so much effort, and, and that was at a cost to the taxpayers. And, and, and all seven members of the county council could have, at that time, during that process, objected to any part of it at any time.
Well, the process isn't finished until both boards agree, correct?
But the process that we sent down.
But this is still part of the process, Jim.
No, I understand.
And then what are we doing?
No, no, you're, no, I understand what, I understand what's going on here very clearly. We sent them an ordinance to approve or not approve. They sent back something entirely different than what the committees agreed to, spent all the time putting together, and I don't understand that. And, and the Opera House was never part of that discussion. I don't understand it. It's $5 million.
I guess you go ahead with your public meeting, I guess. Okay, so what we're going to do here is we're going to suspend the Commissioners' meeting, and we're going to open it up for a public hearing, get an opportunity to come up. We'd like to limit your time to two minutes. I think a lot of his, what's been set up here over the last year will probably be heard again multiple times, so let's try to keep it, let's try to keep it brief and concise. So, with that, we'll start the process. Anybody wishing to come, first call, anybody wishing to come up and speak in favor of this ordinance? Almost got you. Second call. You see, you were listening for once. Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this ordinance? Mike Justin. Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning, Sylvia.
Good morning.
So, good morning, Commissioners. It's a pleasure for Councilmember Graham and I to speak before you on behalf of the county council. And as we, as many of you know, we have worked on a couple of larger topics over the last several weeks. First, first and foremost was the budget that we worked through and completed at our last meeting, which we're pleased to report, we got to the number that we were looking for, due in large part based on the collaboration and cooperation that we received from the Commissioners' Office and several other departments, who were willing to cut some of the expenses to help us get to that figure. So, we're pleased with that and appreciative of the work and the cooperation throughout the, throughout the county to make that happen. So, that's step one, very positive. Step two, of course, as you know, we undertook a wage survey, wage study, and, and I'm going to go past my two minutes if that would be allowed by Commissioner Good and others. And we talked, went through and spent a significant amount of time on the wage, wage analysis that was done, which in my view and our view was a transformative, monumental step in the right direction as it relates to employee wages, where our county employees did not have to wait till the end of the budgeting cycle to find out what was left, and then we would arbitrarily give that money to the different, the different employees in those different positions. So, our, we were pleased with the significant increases that many departments received, and our goal and that, the framework that we worked under basically was to get everybody up to at least the internal base, and then get everybody halfway to the midpoint, and then for those, the ultimate, the ultimate number that they would receive basically is all employees would receive a minimum of a $4,000, $4,000 increase in, in the form of a salary increase and/or a stipend. And that is, of course, on the heels of last year, where there were no, no salary increases. So, I, I mentioned that in addition to the, the fact that there was a 20% maximum, and I think, I think you know the, the basics for that, for the wage study. But we are thrilled with the results of that and thrilled with the salary ordinance that, that we are going to put together, and, and so that's check, check number two, to get something done that has been talked about for many, many years, but hasn't been done up till now. So, we're, we're pleased to report that that is, that is well underway, and again, we appreciate everyone's patience in this particular regard and also cooperation. So, as we look at this particular ordinance, we also have wrestled with, as you know, the ARPA process. ARPA process. And we did go through a process that included committees, that included public input and also certainly public transparency. And I think the process that we went through was good in many respects, but in my view and in our view, it was less than, less than perfect, knowing that in addition to the needs and the requests that were put before us for, from outside organizations, we also recognize very clearly the many internal needs that we have in the county. And, and I'm talking about the infrastructure, I'm talking about road paving, I'm talking about making sure that we maintain a sufficient balance or have a security in our insurance, in our insurance line item. Those are all things that we wrestled with and wanted to make sure that we were well, well protected going into the future. And that wasn't an easy balancing act, and, and we knew that there was going to be some give and take along the way. And so we worked through and came up with what we think is a, a good compromise, a good solution to, in terms of awarding the remainder or appropriating the remainder of the money for the ARPA, for the ARPA process. And I would say, you know, as, for as much as we could, we can say, people could have, should have talked about things all along. I'd say that's partially true. But by the same token, the process wasn't finished until, and went through the steering committee, and it went to the commissioner's office, and then the final step is truly having the money appropriating, appropriated by the county council. That in effect is the final, is the final step. And so if, 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 if we can look back and say, could we or should we have handled things differently? I'd say there were plenty of things that we could have done differently to make the process more perfect. And one would have been without a doubt is to better explain or better communicate to the outside organizations that this process wasn't finalized until the county council appropriated the money. And, and I know for a variety of different reasons, there were assumptions made, and there were feelings that, that, you know, once it was voted on in the committee, that it was a done deal. Once it was voted on at the steering committee, it was a done deal. Once it was voted on or created at the commissioner's office, that it was a done deal. And those things are not, those things are not accurate. And so for that, I think we could have done better in letting them, letting the outside organizations know that until the money was appropriated by the council, it wasn't, it wasn't finished. So as we wrestled with the different needs that we have throughout the county, and we have plenty, and I think it's outlined in the ordinance, we talked about the roadway, roadway project that is near complete, if not already complete, where there's $2.7 million allocated toward that road paving, which is all but done, if not complete. So that's part of what you're looking at. The, the Opera House is something that hasn't just been thrown on the table. The Opera House and renovating and expanding the Opera House has been in the talks and been in the discussion for years. And I think we've talked about that at great length in terms of the importance of it, the historical significance of it, the programming that it does, and the programming and opportunities that will be expanded upon with, with the renovation. And keeping in mind that our focus has been in the last seven and a half years, has been taking care of county needs, taking care of county assets. And you can look throughout the entire county on the things that have been touched, have been repaired, have been built, have been renovated, has been paved, as a result of our focus of taking care of the things that we're responsible for. And I would say in this particular case, the Memorial Opera House is no doubt one of those, one of those assets that must be taken care of, must be cared for. We've talked about it at length, if not at nauseam, over the last several years in terms of the importance of getting that particular project done. Talking about shoring up the health insurance account in there, in the ordinance you're looking at, I believe, shows $1.1.6 million that is allocated toward that. And that's to ensure that we have enough funding in our health insurance account to take care of whatever might come before us and to make sure that we don't run short. The other items included in there include the Porter County Sheriff's SWAT vehicle truck, it involves, which is $300,000. The Porter County Veteran Service Office Outreach Program, which we have concerns about and issues with, $50,000. The Porter County Parks Capital Needs, we, I think, can all agree that we need an infusion of money to help, help that program along. And also with the wages that I talked about that we're very, very proud of, we talked about salary increases and/or, and/or stipends. One, 1.7, $1,076,555 of that funding that you're looking at, or that, of that ordinance you're looking at, is to go to employee stipends for this upcoming, for this upcoming year. And then the last, the last thing that also, that we talked about is, you know, the eight, what was $8.9 million that were offered up to the nonprofit and outside organizations. And I can, from my perspective, for, we had many, many wins in the ARPA process, and then we also had some misses. So I wouldn't be the first person to take the victory lap on how that was such a wonderful, perfect process. It did some good things. It did get some input, but for those of you that were at the meetings, you know, the attendance was very sparse. For those of you who viewed the videos online, the views were very limited. Most of the people that were most animated or exercised about developing a process, once that process was in fact developed, they were nowhere to be seen. And so we're, we were in a situation where we're saying, well, what do we do with the work that the committees did? And we appreciate the work that the committees did. And for the, for the citizens that got involved with it, we appreciate that. But the idea of taking $8.9 million and offering that up to outside organizations that were aware of the process and, and submitted their proposal, knowing that we have all these other county needs, we struggled with that $8.9 million, $8.9 million. And so what we did and came up with as a compromise of sorts, and, and I also want to mention that Project Neighbors, which was one of those organizations that, that submitted a proposal, a proposal that was initially at a million dollar, a million dollars requested, they came to us and, and agreed to take a reduced amount of $700,000. And that's because, of course, their goal was to see the process complete, and they also changed the scope of the work that they had proposed to do, which was a great, a great gesture on their part. And so we took that in appreciation, and then also looked at the other nonprofit outside organizations and said, if we were to take 10% from the money that had been proposed to be awarded to them, what would that look like? And of course, it doesn't take a math genius to figure out that that's, that would take about a million dollars away from those organizations, and that would allow us to put that funding into things that we felt were more specifically geared toward serving the county now, and also serving the county far into the future. And, and that still leaves those outside organizations with $7.9 million to do a variety of great projects, a variety of great work, and, and we know that they'll, they'll produce terrific results with that $7.9 million, $7.9 million. So that's, that's the proposal we came up with. And granted, this is the body that creates the ordinances. This is the body that, that appropriates the funding. And so our offering to you is to say, here's what we have appropriated. Now it would be up to you to pass the ordinance that could make that, to make that happen. And so in the spirit of getting the wages where they need to be, in the spirit of getting ARPA once and for all finally moving forward, especially for these nonprofits and outside organizations, not to mention the county work that is already in process, we would humbly respect or humbly appreciate your, your agreement with this particular ordinance. I don't know, Sylvia, if you have anything you'd like to add?
Well, I would just like to say that we had a plethora of things that was thrown upon us with the budget and with other government needs, as well as the ARPA funds that had been passed. And we worked hard and diligently and felt as if this was a good compromise. And we have not, I have not heard one person that is going to receive our money being unhappy about the way this is being resolved. They're thrilled, they're very happy with receiving the money that, that has been, that we have passed. I feel as if it was discussed a multitude of times about the Memorial Opera House, with the public having input one way or another on, on how they felt. I feel as if the Memorial Opera House is, is a vital part of our, our government. We, it's one of our buildings. In fact, we have two buildings over there. The museum that is just sitting too. We're trying to get two buildings functioning as something for the future that the county can be very proud of. We're proud of it now, but it's going to be better. And I agree with Mike. I'm humbly asking that you, we approved it all in one motion. We didn't break it up into different things. We made one vote and we approved it all in one motion. And it included, like Mike said, not only the Memorial Opera House, but the health insurance fund, roads funds, the SWAT team vehicle, the wage study supplements and wages and employee wages, the county parks, the county veterans, and a lot of stormwater. We did a lot of, both bodies, we have done a lot of good things. And I think that approval of this will be monumental for moving Porter County's future and moving it to better, bigger, better things than it is now.
Yeah, thank you, Sylvia. So I think, you know, to reiterate on the Opera House specifically, because that seems to be a topic of conversation, the, the Opera House itself, as, as we look at the renovation, we look at the addition, and Sylvia is exactly right, it's not only the Opera House, but it's the sheriff's residence that needs to be cared for, cared for as well. And I can, I can confidently say for those that may not think that the Opera House would be appropriate, appropriate use for ARPA, I know a lot of people who are intimately familiar with the real name, much more so than, than I am, who would argue that in fact, the Opera House could be one of the best uses. And I don't want to put words in your mouth, Madam Auditor, but I believe you've said that in the past, to say that that is, would be one of the best uses for it. And lastly, I'll just say that as we look at, and I'm proud of the $7.98, 898, almost $8 million that we're awarding these nonprofits and, and outside organizations. And I can also share with you that there's not another municipality that I'm aware of that has done anything close to that with outside organizations and nonprofits. And in fact, I haven't heard of many, if any, who are offering a fraction of that. So I think this truly is a good blend of, of all the things that we want to do internally and also to help the outside agencies. And I, like Sylvia, have not heard one instance of anyone upset, discouraged, angry about the fact that although they thought they were going to get a million dollars, now they're going to get 900,000. Haven't heard anybody complain about that at this point. So with that, we respectfully request your approval for the plan that, that we put forward for your, for your consideration. And we, and we did so because a plan had to be developed. And so we came up with one, and we offer that up for your consideration.
Third and final call, anybody wish to come forward to speak in favor of this ordinance? Name and address, yes, anywhere.
John Paluso, 1359 Veranda Drive in Valpo. I just wanted to say thank you to the council members for putting this together and the commissioners as you're considering it. I know that this process has been a long time coming. It's not been an easy one. There's certainly been disagreements. I would like to point out that there have been plenty of opportunities to figure out where the funding is going to come from. There's different pots of money that could be chosen between taxes and bonds and ARPA funds, et cetera. I know that there's been a lot of communication about what the best way to do that going forward, to take care of everyone's needs. And that said, not everyone will agree with the final compromise position, and that's okay. And that's why a vote is taken eventually. So to the extent that there's going to be people that are getting money that they would never have gotten before, as the council members related, I've heard nothing but great things from people that are thrilled, sort of a don't look a gift horse in the mouth. They're getting a lot of money that most places, most counties are not giving out from ARPA funds in order to make the county a better place. That said, we have an obligation as a county to take care of county needs first, and that's what this does. There may be other ways to have gone about the funding process, and some of those were explored, and there was some opposition faced to that. And so alternate ways of figuring it out came together, and this is where we are now. Everyone gets most of what they want here, but nobody gets everything of what they want. And that is usually what happens when people have to come together to make decisions about public funding. Going forward, I hope that if there are questions about what's in an ordinance that's in front, I've got a county attorney, so if there's any questions about it, I'm sure he could help clarify anything if there's really confusion about it. I think most people that are, have been aware of the process regarding the Opera House specifically, it's not been a mystery over the last couple of years what's been going on. It's not confusing. It doesn't make anybody look foolish to get up and say, we finally found a compromise position that has six to one votes on the council and hopefully three to nothing on this board. If it ends up being two to one, okay, fine. That's just how votes work. And so if there's a question about it, this is why we have discussion, the process of how to come up with money, that's what's been going on for the past year. So if there are still questions about it, I look forward to hearing what the discussion is. But I thank you all for all of your work. I know that this has been a frustrating process for everybody at times, but it seems like everybody has come together and figured out what the most plausible way forward is to take care of county needs while also reserving enough money to help out some of the organizations that are sort of auxiliary members of our county. So thank you very much. I look forward to hearing the discussion, and I hope that you are going to end up passing it.
Thank you. One last call, anybody wanting to speak in favor? Okay, first call, anybody wanting to speak against the passage of this ordinance? Please come forward, name and address.
Hi, I'm Dawn Miller, living in Valparaiso. First, I just wanted to say to Commissioner Blaney that in April, you came up to me specifically after the meeting and said that you guys are no longer seeking this $5 million from the ARPA funds.
Dawn, can you speak in the mic, please?
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
Sorry, what's up? So I'm just curious, the 10% that you're skimming off the top of the nonprofits, do you feel is that's fair? I mean, it's, it's, it may be funny to you, Jeff Good, but I don't feel it's funny. I mean, the money that was given from the government is supposed to be to help people, not to lavishly upgrade buildings. The museum is sitting empty at this time? Yeah, we know that, because 2017, the Museum Foundation put that museum in that building. Then all of a sudden, they were moved across the street to where Astrid Gray is. So of course, the sheriff's building is now sitting empty. With both buildings being historic, I think they're beautiful buildings, definitely need to keep them. Definitely need to keep them upgraded, updated. Just really hope you take in consideration. Just because other counties didn't give nonprofits this kind of money doesn't mean that we shouldn't. Because in fact, it's supposed to be for the people. It's supposed to be to help get people back on their feet. These small organizations that you're taking this money from, a lot of people actually depend on that money and that help from those people.
Thank you. Second call, anybody wish to come forward to speak against this ordinance?
Robin Lane, 258 Has Street, Valparaiso, Indiana. As somebody that was on the committee and has done a lot of research about the ARPA funds, I do want to just remind everyone that those funds are supposed to be used for people that have been affected by the pandemic. I do know that the Opera House is something that they've been needing to remodel for many years prior to the pandemic happening. I have no problem with those, with funds going to the Opera House that are non-ARPA related, but when you're taking money from money that's been given to counties for a specific reason and then you're actually using it otherwise, that's something that I have a problem with. And also, like I said, I was at all of these meetings that went on for the ARPA committees, and no one ever stood up and said anything about the Opera House. I am, would be, would have been well open to having them come and present for one of these committees, and they never did. And nobody else ever came up and spoke during any of the public comment. So with that being said, I mean, obviously you guys are going to do what you think is best for the county, but I just don't agree with changing your mind in the midst of the whole process being somewhat settled. And then, you know, as a resident, I mean, it kind of puts a little trust behind the process that it's been, you know, tarnished a little bit. So I do wish you guys all luck in the process, though, and thanks again for all the time and energy you guys have put in so far.
Thank you. Last call, anybody wish to come forward? Here we go, one more.
Hello? Jill Stryker, 702 Ella Street, Couts, Indiana. And I am definitely against this. This is a lot of money. This money should have been going or should be going to families that maybe lost their loved ones during all of this pandemic. There's so, that's a lot of money, $5 million, instead of into a historical building. I'm sitting here thinking, as Mr. Jepson was talking, there's a Call Your Lodge that just got torn down down in Couts that nobody cared to take care of, and that was a historical building. And they had to tear it down because 20-plus years they've been trying to raise funds to restore it. We've had presidents that stayed in that lodge. That's Native American land that's down there. People seem to forget about Couts. They think about Valparaiso and that's it. Well, I'm south of 30, and I like being south of 30. So why should all of this money go to this building in Valpo that is a historical building? That is where the historical society should be running different events and not try any ones. There should be a place where families can come here and watch good, clean shows. They should be able to go to the museum next door and learn about their history of their county, not to see men dressed as women performing up on stage. There it is. You all better start waking up, because we voted you in, we can definitely vote you out. I've had enough of this crap. This is a lot of dang money that needs to be put out to people that actually deserve it, not to a building. So think twice about what you're wanting to do with this. At the end of the day, yes, you're going to do what you want to do. I'm just a little peon that lives in Couts, Indiana. But just think, that is a lot of dang money that doesn't deserve to go to a building. Thank you.
And with that, the hearing's closed. Open it up for the commissioners to, this is first reading, first reading.
I have a couple of comments. I mean, first of all, I represent all of the people in Porter County, not just some of them. And as far as what this money is supposed to be used for, this money fits very well into the guidelines that were put out by the federal government as we have clarified with our auditor, correct? It fits?
Yes, it does. And can I elaborate on that?
Please.
If you look at your third amendment to your ARPA plan, the ordinance that you passed, you put in $10 million under the-
I'm getting to that.
Oh, you're getting to that, okay. So when you say, "Does it fit?", yes, most of the projects that are in the ordinance before you will be placed in that revenue replacement category. There are maybe two, maybe three of the projects that could be placed in another expenditure category, and one of them is the Memorial Opera House project. And that's where it should go. It will be divided between those two categories.
So part of what the committees passed was $10 million in revenue replacement. And that $10 million did not get funneled into the separate categories and allocated. What the council has done is go back, now that they've gone through the budget process, and look at all of the numbers and all of the needs, and they allocated this $10 million of revenue replacement. We didn't take $10 million away from anyone. And if you want to talk about the million that was skimmed off the top, that went to our employees' raises. And so basically what they did is say, "This is, these are things we need to do as a county." Roads, the Opera House project, and all the things. The health insurance fund, the SWAT vehicle, all the things they listed. So this isn't, they didn't change really anything that the committees decided. They changed the numbers a little bit. They tweaked it. But the $10 million in revenue replacement, the committees did not decide how that money was going to be spent at that time, and they have clarified this. And I know you did a lot of work trying to get all of these bases covered, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Well, a couple of things. There was a comment made by one of the, one of the public that was asked to speak about, no one should be confused, you know, because we've been speaking, we've been talking about the Memorial Opera House for years. And this year's a 2018 study. The only study's been done on the building. Within this study, it states that project is $2.9 million. It's what the projected cost is. That went from $2.9 to $5.5 with no explanation when the ARPA funds fell in the lap of county government. That's what I suspect. Then it went from $5.5, when the economy started hitting, hitting the skids, to $7.5, is anybody's best guess. That in a nutshell is my issue. We have never, as a board, as the executive body of county government, we have never approved this project and sent it on to be funded. And we have, we have the fiscal body of county government stating, "Well, we're going to go ahead and appropriate $5 million on what is projected to be a $7.5 million." Never mind where the additional $2.5 is going to come from to finish out the project. This is what I don't understand. We have never sent this project onto the county council for approval. Never have done that. We have nev-, I have never had the architect come before the Board of Commissioners in a public meeting and present their blueprints to us and explain why this, why they're recommending what they're recommending and why is the price tag what it is. Now, I realize, I totally get, and my objection, maybe I should have been clear, my objection is not, is not, I know the council has done hard work, Mike and Sylvia, and I appreciate that. My issue is that the $5 million come out of the $10 million and was thrown into this ordinance. That's what I have the issue with. That we, that we, we're ready to say that of all the things, all the issues that we have, and you, and the council did, the council did take issue with some of it and tried to address them, $2.5 with the road funding. But you all know, that just barely scratches the surface. That we, that of all the problems that we have, whether it's with wages or whether it's stormwater, whether it's with roads and sidewalks, that the biggest piece, the single biggest piece of this ARPA funds is going to the Opera House? Going to the Opera House? And if, you know, if the cry about fixing that building is really, is what it is, is that we have this huge responsibility for that building and to make sure that it's in good, it's in good shape, then why aren't we talking about fixing the Opera House? But that's not what we're talking about here, folks. We're talking about a build-out. If the Board of Commissioners or anybody else had come to me and said, "Jim, and it's industry pork, here's what it's going to cost to repair the Opera House." I'm fine with that, because we do, as Mitty said, and I think Mike said, Jess said, we have an obligation to look after, to maintain that building. It's a historical monument. But nothing like that was proposed. What's proposed is a build-out. Is to blow a hole in the side of it, blow a hole in the side of the other, the other building, connected to between, connected to with a structure made out of aluminum and glass. That's the proposal. And if I'm wrong, well, hey, I haven't had the benefit of having the architect in front of me to tell me exactly what's going to happen here or what they're recommending to happen. I have never, in all my years in county government, serving you folks, have never seen a project of this size and this scope take centerpiece in county government when we have all, we're, I mean, it's, all these other issues that we have. We have a center district garage that hasn't had a, you know, screw turned in it since the 1960s, where our administration is managing the entire inventory of our county roads out of. We have, we have a problem in our county jail that needs attention. We don't have the ability to adequately take in inmates who have severe mental health issues. The Opera House, or that project, I'm not saying it's not important, but I'm saying if we're making a list of things that we need to take priority with, that is not number one, two, or three. It's not. That's, that's all I have to say.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance ratifying Porter County's fourth proposed investment of American Rescue Plan Act funds, planned for the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021.
And I'll second it. I'd also like to say, first of all, the most amount of money that was spent in ARPA was on stormwater. It wasn't the Memorial Opera House. So once again, facts are wrong.
Well, you're wrong.
Number two.
You're wrong, you're wrong.
Well, whatever, Jim.
No, you're wrong. I said, the single, the single expenditure size-
It's my turn to speak too now. Would you let me speak? I listen to your nonsense, then I'll let me speak.
Well, I didn't, I didn't challenge you with something you said I said.
I'm just trying to get my speech out, Jim, and obviously you're really upset about something, so.
Yeah, it's $5 million.
I would also like to say that the architect was in front of us, and it was a 3-0 vote. So for someone up here to sit there and say that this was moved on and he had nothing to do about it is totally wrong. And that is a fact, Jim, that he'll say he didn't.
We had, we had a presentation by the architect for $2.9 million project. And today it's $7.5.
This was, this was a, this was a fluid process. When we did the architecture, the architecture was under work when COVID hit. Architecture would have allowed us to come up with a price, to then go talk and work out the problem. But then COVID hit. And nobody wants to talk about the timing of all this. And for anybody to sit there and say that COVID did not have an effect on the Memorial, that was one of the reasons why COVID came out was for theaters. There's a whole section on theaters and things. So I'm, I'm, I've sat up here all year and just listened to nonsense, nonsense. That's what it is. I wasn't the one that decided 180 years ago to go downstate and build this building. That wasn't up to me. But you know what? We put the same type of money in the Expo Center, and we didn't hear one peep out of anybody for that. And that's the same thing we're doing here. It's the same thing. Nothing different. This is all politics. That's all this is. It's just theater, okay? So my second stands. Any further discussions?
Just to want to point out, those buildings that we spent, we spent all that work on and all that money on, they were delivering county services. That building does not. Okay. Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Next up, we're going to move to MuniCode. This is an ordinance, Bob, you want to come forward?
Well, this is me.
Oh, this is you. Oh, that's, okay. MuniCode, an ordinance of Porter County adopting a recodification of the Porter County Code. County code recompiled and edited to bring into compliance with state, federal citation and law changed since last codification in 1997. This is on first reading.
So, changing gears quite a bit. Our normal county code, Commissioner Briggs was actually a commissioner in 1997, the first time the county took the entire book of ordinances or pile of ordinances and compiled them into one municipal code that's codified, edited, indexed, et cetera. That process in 1997 was completed. And then, over the years, as you've all been, of those of you that come here, we pass ordinances, we modify ordinances, we change them. Then those go in and they continue on into this pile of ordinances, so to speak. Well, since 1997, that had not been redone. Obviously, lots of laws changed between 1997 and now, whether it's at the state level or the federal level. And what MuniCode did, and this got a little slowed down because of COVID, but what MuniCode did was go in, reorganize, recodify, change the citations. There is no substantial change to the actual codes themselves except for reorganizing them, making sure the state and federal law citations are correct, removing anything that had become illegal since 1997, adding things that become required. I guess my point here is, is that this recodification was not done to make any kind of sweeping changes to the county code. There are very few, if any, actual language changes. The changes are coming from organization citations and also bringing it into 2022 as far as being, instead of everybody getting this book when it's, if it's eventually passed, going online, and then which allows the process as this board continues to pass ordinances and add and change things, it's then kept up on the online version, which then the public and everyone gets to have way easier access to, to find what these code citations are. So ultimately today, this is first reading. This entire book of ordinances will be at the clerk's office for anyone to inspect, review, and look at. There will be several copies at the clerk's office, and this will also be advertised several times between now and second reading to comply with those publication ordinances. But if anyone has any questions or concerns, they can obviously call me. But again, this is about bringing this up to date from 1997. And 1997 was the first time it had been done at all. So we've been around a lot longer than 1997 by that point in time. And so that was the first big effort. This is the next effort to bring us into compliance. And lastly, we had been Lance Bella for me and May will test. We had been in a situation where this code had gotten so old and the citations so out of date, that entire state law sections had moved and all of the citations in our code had changed, because that's a constantly evolving situation with the state legislature. So be happy to answer any questions, but all just to be at the clerk's office. We're going to have a second reading. It will be advertised. Any questions, anyone feel free to contact me. But hopefully that kind of gives an idea of exactly what we were attempting to try to get done.
Well, I think it also helps too, because in 97, people weren't accessing it on the computer.
Correct.
And now they're accessing it, a lot more people are accessing it on the computer. And now they're accessing it, a lot more people are accessing it on the computer, so they're going there with wrong information. So I, I think that this is well overdue.
Yeah, and once it's online, Municode is the, probably the leader, if not almost the only person in this space. They have a very robust website, would all be hyperlink within it, so that if you're in a section and it refers to a state law or a fed law or whatever the case may be, it just takes you right there. So again, I think it's good for transparency, it's going to be, once it's done and approved and put online, it will be much easier for everyone to grapple with than it is now, because right now you have to come and get the book. And it's, it's on our website, but it's PDFed onto our website for the most part. So that's plenty on this.
So again, this is a public hearing. We're going to pause the commissioners' meeting, and we're going to give opportunities for both sides to discuss the passing of this ordinance. So first call, anybody wish to come forward to speak in favor of this ordinance? Second call, anybody wish to come forward and speak in favor of this ordinance? Third call, anybody wish to come forward to speak in favor of this ordinance? First call, anybody wish to come forward to speak against this ordinance? Second call, anybody wish to come forward to speak against this ordinance? Third and final call, anybody wish to come forward to speak against this ordinance? And with that, public hearings closed. I'll throw it to the Board of Commissioners for comments or actions. Yeah, I got a kind of a funny story. When this was, when this was recodified 97, we actually found an ordinance that was, that existed at that time that you couldn't tie your horse to the front door of the county courthouse if you're visiting. So that is sort of like, you know, that is sort of the things that, that have to be cherry picked out of there that no longer.
That sounds like us.
Yeah. But that's not, that's not, that's a huge task to take on, to recodify all that.
It's been a process.
Well, and having it online and searchable is going to be huge.
Yes, right.
Thank you for all your work on this.
A motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on first reading for a Municode change, a recodification of the Porter County Code. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries. Second reading will be at our next meeting in December. Next up, Quadian, Quadian, postage meter rental renewal agreement for the courthouse in the amount of $148.48 a month.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for a postage meter rental renewal agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries. Next up, this is for the Sheriff's Department. I don't think we need, I don't think the sheriff's here. We have a merit officer request for additional 90 working days of sick time off. Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries. Next up, Auditor Vicki Urbannick. Bye, Edie.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, Commissioners, just some introductory comments. On October 18th, the Porter County Council approved appropriations for 18 non-for-profit organizations totaling just under $7.9 million in ARPA funds. When you add that to the three nonprofits that were approved in prior rounds of approval, we'll be sharing ARPA funds with 20 nonprofits for 22 different projects totaling just under $9.5 million. Today, we have the first written agreement with one of those nonprofits. This is for, this is with the Neighbors Educational Opportunities, or NEO for short, and as stated in the written agreement, they plan to utilize their money for establishing a new childcare center at their school, as well as a workforce development training center. I do just want to mention that preparing all of these written agreements takes a lot of work in our auditor's office. Even though we have a template that we use, we still have to establish a relationship with each of these external agencies. The reason why we were able to get this before you so quickly after October 18th, when that appropriation was approved, is because NEO in our office has been working on this for some time. They've, they've been sort of under a, they have circumstances where they're trying to fast-track their projects. So on their behalf, I'd like you to, I request that you approve this agreement with them so we can get them moving.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Yeah, a motion and a second for NEO Opportunities ARPA Agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries. Vicki, I, go ahead.
There'll be many more coming.
Yeah, I was just going to say, you know, because we're coming to the year, end of the year in your term, this next meeting in December, we're going to probably have a lot of these agreements in front of us. So I just, because this got pushed out, it's putting a lot of pressure back on your office, and I see that.
This coming Thursday, we're going to have a meeting with, well, anyone who wants to come, but it's really geared towards those nonprofits and the townships that haven't yet gotten their written agreement, and the non-county government entities, any external agency that's getting some of our ARPA monies. We're going to go through the process, and we're going to hopefully determine how many of them want to get going faster, how many might want to wait until sometime next year.
Okay.
And we'll do our best to get the agreements before you in December.
Okay. And we have, the deadline's the end of 2024.
2024 to obligate, which means to contract out, to actually have a written legal document committing the funds.
So they got time.
Yes.
Thanks, Vicki, again, for all your hard work.
Thank you. It's been fun.
Yeah. Health, uh, yeah, Health Department, Sheila Paul, and Attorney Dave Hollenbeck. Good morning.
Good morning.
You guys aren't trying to modify the Munico, the, the Munico order before I get the, before I get the read on past, are you? By the way, it's going to be chapter 12 moving forward at some point. We'll, we'll figure it out.
We'll figure it out. Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Dave Hollenbeck, as you know, I'm the attorney for the Porter County Board of Health, and Sheila Paul, our administrator, is here, and these excellent looking people are each of our division heads from the, the four divisions of the Health Department who can answer any questions you may have. Last Wednesday, I forwarded to each of you a memorandum, and attached to that memorandum was the spreadsheet, which was the work product of these people. We were asked by the Board of Health to do a deep dive into our fee system and evaluate where it may be needed to have so tweaking. The goal was to align, make sure we're in alignment between the cost of the service that's being provided and what the fee is, under the theory that we'd like to minimize our dependency on the real estate property taxes as a means of funding the Health Department. We also have a couple of other things going. We've made some successes with regard to grant funding, both from other agencies and from the State Department of Health. As an example, our emergency coordinator position is fully funded under a state grant, as is a lot of the expenditures we have to make for that essential function. And so we've moved that entirely out of the, the property taxes. But what I attached to the memorandum I sent you, if I could approach you and refresh your recollection on this, attached to it is the spreadsheets that were the results of our efforts to align this. And actually, what we discovered is we were probably in better shape than we thought we were going to be. And you, what you'll see on there is the, the product of that results in three possible variables. One, we're recommending the fee stays the same. Secondly, there are a number of those slots where the fee is actually going down for the service provided, and then there are some where the fee is going, going up, again to reflect the cost of, of, of doing that. As an example, we're the best example in county government for unfunded mandates. The legislature always wants to give us things to do to save money at the state, they take it away from the State Department of Health, they give it to us, and lo and behold, no money comes along with it. In recent years, two examples of that has been the inspection of public pools, which used to be a state function and now is our local function with no additional money. And then a couple of years ago, it was decided that tattoo parlors should be inspected by local health departments. So we've had to absorb those as two examples of costs, and we're proposing that we assess reasonable fees on those two operations so we can recover the costs of, of doing that. Our statute, and as you well know, we are kind of a hybrid county department. We are perceived for many reasons as an extension of the State Department of Health, which means we have loyalties, responsibilities, and obligations to the State Department of Health, but we're also a local. As you well know, you appoint the members to the Board of Health, and we are, for all practical purposes, also a county department. And so we often are betwixt and between in terms of some of these responsibilities that we, that we have. All in all, the result of the study is, I think it's fair to say, and hopefully had a chance to look at it, no significant increases, a few reductions, and many of them we decided to stay the same. But our statute says that the Health Department, the Board of Health is responsible for setting these fees with the approval of the county commissioners. So our governing board has unanimously approved what we've presented to you, and we're looking for your acquiescence in that. You talk about 1997, what we discovered is some of these hadn't, in our case, hadn't been looked at in 10 years, so we did have some catching up to do. We're here to answer any questions or concerns you may have, but we're asking for affirmative action today to move the process along so that at your next meeting, hopefully you can adopt the ordinance that would establish this new system for, for fees.
For '23.
For, starting January 1st of 2023.
And you're saying the last time this was done was 10 years ago?
On some of these, not all of them, but some of them. We've stayed pretty good on food and on septic, but some of the more obscure things that we do, candidly, we hadn't done anything in 10 years.
It seems to me like pools would be sort of part of the stormwater piece too, because, I mean, pools function within themselves, but you always have a discharge issue, and that's something that I think should be.
Commissioner, we'd be happy to give pools to the stormwater management. In fact, I think, I think that's a great idea.
Well, we usually get the call when it floods, so you want it done right on the front end, so, um, yeah. No, I just.
You can have tattoos.
Yeah, no, no, I, it's, uh, it's just funny how they always sort of add on things to these departments, but they never really go back and really figure out how it's all supposed to work within it. It's, there's so many gaps out there that we always, they always seem to find their way to our office.
The gap often gets filled on us.
Right.
And then we have to figure, I know we've had a learning experience, we know more about tattoo parlors than we ever had wanted to.
And then, before we get into the hearing, real quick, I know the state, the governor put a committee together, they went around the state, I'm seeing that there's some things coming out now, some plan of actions or other things, and I didn't know if any of that was looked at, or if any of that has to do with this, I'm, I'm not sure.
It could in the future in that there.
Okay, so that's not in there.
It's not in there because those things have not been acted upon by the legislature. They probably will be because the report is now done. Unfortunately, it does show, as you've alluded to, some significant gaps in public health administration in the state of Indiana. To the extent that those get filled, I'm afraid we may have more responsibilities. But Sheila, why don't you talk about that report?
Yeah, we're actually very excited that the governor took action and realized that public health in Indiana was not where it should be. We're doing great with cost of living, and we're doing great with business, but public health has been slowly declining, to the point where just across the state, there's a nine-year life expectancy from the longest to the shortest life expectancy from county to county. And that's a huge gap, and we want all of Indiana to be consistent and have the same core services. So just like you said, they put together the commission, and we're so excited that they did, because hopefully now funding will start trickling our way, and we can start getting out there and providing all those services through our mobile health clinic that we've just gotten and should be here in January. We're very excited to start using that, wish we would have had that during COVID, that would have been nice, but, so yeah, we're very excited about it. So you will probably be hearing more from us, I hope, anyway.
Okay, thank you. So with that, again, one more time, public hearing, we're going to close the commissioners' meeting, going to open up a public hearing. First opportunity, anybody to come forward to speak against this ordinance? Second call, anybody wish to come forward to speak against this ordinance? Third and final call, anybody wish to come forward to speak against this ordinance? First call, anybody wish to come forward to speak in favor of this ordinance? Second call, anybody wish to come forward to speak in favor of this ordinance? Third and final call, anybody wish to come forward to speak against this ordinance? And with that, public hearings close, throw it to the Board of Commissioners for action.
Motion to approve on first reading.
Second. We have a motion and a second on an ordinance modifying the Porter County Health, Board of Health fee structure. First reading, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries. December 6th, 10 o'clock, same time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Assessors Office.
Morning.
So what do you got?
Annual request for bids for the training study. You guys are probably getting familiar with this process year after year, so same thing, I think we opened it up for bids as we were supposed to, and I'm not sure exactly what course came hither.
So we have a proposal here from Appraisal Research Corporation. They're out of Oscean, Indiana. The cost is $45,500. You want to see this or?
Seems to be in line with prior contracts you guys have approved.
Yep.
Yes.
I just didn't know if you wanted to look through anything, John, before?
No, I think that this price is at or less possibly there, about the same.
Same.
Yeah, so, and, and these guys, this organization has helped us year after year, they've done a great job.
So you're, you're very familiar with it?
Yes.
It's the same guys, I think, yeah. Any comments, questions? Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the annual adjustment ratio study for Porter County. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. You'll want to get that back to him, because we have to sign that contract.
Is there a contract?
Yeah. Thank you. Carrie.
Hi, Carrie. Good morning. Happy November 1st.
It's Carrie Marsh, she's the Director of Recycling and Waste Reduction. We don't get to see her much here. So what do you got for us?
So it is our biannual user fee agreement. We utilize the Auditor's and Treasurer's Office to collect our user fee through the property taxes every year. So this is just our two-year agreement that we're just, that we submit every two years for renewal, well, not renewal, but same terms. I've spoke with both the Auditor and the Treasurer, and everybody seems to be in agreement.
Motion to approve.
Yeah, second. We have a motion and a second on the waste and recycling fee district fee collection for Porter County. This is the agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries. Thank you. Next up, Development Stormwater Management, Bob Thompson. We have a letter of credit from Centaur Bank.
Okay.
It's a maintenance letter of credit for Timberland Farms LLC. This is phase three, in the amount of $61,500. Anything to add, Bob?
This is just a six-monthened extension. They called up and asked us to release it, but we needed to do some. Um, they called up and asked us to release it, but we needed to do some inspections. We were kind of going through some reorganization a little bit, so this crept up on us. So I asked for a six-month extension and it's also including some infrastructure that they need to work with us on improving, such as a pedestrian bridge and a retaining wall that are part of phase three.
Okay. And that's included in that cost of that bond?
Correct.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for a letter of credit for Timberland Farms LLC, phase three. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
And next up, we got Edwin Kerr. Uh, this is Courtside Ministries. Uh, this is a request to use the courthouse grounds with two volunteers near the southern courthouse door to offer prayer for anyone who asks for prayer. The purpose of the activity is to offer to pray quietly and secretly for any request voiced by any person who happens to enter, leave, or pass by the Porter County courthouse, while respecting the privacy of those who do not wish to speak with us. The volunteers identify themselves with badges that say need prayer and give their first names. There is also a literature table with banners saying the same thing. They will come on Tuesday from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. and on other days, if they have enough volunteers. This request is for January 3rd through December 31st, '24. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners.
I think I read that right?
Yes.
Anything you wish to add before we take action?
No, I'm just, uh, waiting on the generosity of the Commissioners. Thank you.
Yeah, you've been before us before. I think it was about a year or two ago, wasn't it?
That's right.
Yeah. Okay. Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
And God bless you.
Thank you. God bless you for what you're doing. And now we come to the end of our meeting. Uh, is there anybody wishing to address this board? And with that, this board stands in recess.